Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm.
Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee and discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Jordan. Here's your flash briefing for the week of August 11th. City Council will meet for a regular session Tuesday night at 6:00 in Council chambers in City Hall. Meetings are open to the public or watch live on the city's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the recorded meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the Council debrief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. The city is seeking public input regarding contracted residential curbside solid waste services. The meetings will be held in an open house style format in each council district. Feel free to attend the one that works best for you. Public comments can also be submitted online through August 15th at 5:00 PM. Learn more at cityofls.net. The grand opening of Green Street is this weekend, August 15th through 17th. Everyone is invited to celebrate the ribbon cutting and opening of this bold vibrant gathering space. Green Street will be home to the indoor farmers market, live music, local art, open air performances, and extraordinary events in a dynamic indoor-outdoor setting. Grand opening weekend will be packed with live entertainment, food trucks, kids activities, live music, the Saturday farmers market, and more. You don't want to miss this. Come be a part of it. If you would like a front row seat to the grand opening of Green Street, we are on the lookout for volunteers. Be a part of opening weekend magic. Learn more and sign up at greenstreetls.com. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place a speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our fluorescent yellow-green, whatever. And basically what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the roller. And once we got it covered, take it to our work table here. And Tim will cut the corners, cut all the access off to where it's lined up right. As far as the plotter and the software that we use, there's a street name sign there. And he's going to go ahead and print that out on the plotter so you can see the plotter and how it operates and runs. There are standards for the height, even just on letters on the sign blank. Basically what we have on the computer there is it's pretty much set up to those. And it goes through, it's got a very small but sharp needle that goes through and cuts everything out, letter by letter. Once that's done cutting, our next stage would be bringing it over here. Currently picking out the signed letters right now. We call it weeding or picking or however you want to call it. Next, putting it on the transfer tape. Then after it's taped, we bring it over to the roller. That's where we apply it to the actual sign blank. And we'll roll it through one time just to get the air bubbles out. And the last stage is basically just taking the transfer tape off the front of it. And there's the finished product of the street name sign. We'll take you out to the field and show you our process that we go through. We're going to go out and follow our sign guys, get something installed for you. This is where we check our underground utilities. Tim, you got AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T is back here.
EverG, Google, so we should be good to go. We normally put all of our stuff together out in the field. Then once the base is installed, we'll go ahead and put the post in there. We've come up to perfect. And that's how we do it. Simple, quick.
Lee Summit has lots of local destinations, but where do you start? Green Street, a vibrant community space in the heart of downtown, is where Lee Summit comes together. Its three dynamic areas have something for everyone. Green Street Market is a modern event venue and home to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market. Green Street Lawn is a covered performance space hosting live music, family activities, and more. Green Street Grove is a mixture of gathering spaces, an immersive playground, and bold architectural features. And all three areas host community events year round. So the next time you set out to enjoy the city you love, remember, meet at Green Street.
It's extremely rewarding overall, just the fact of working with other council people and other volunteer commission members that are so involved and care so much about making this community better. It sort of kind of lifts your own spirits by being involved in that kind of environment with other people like that. For many years, I was a typical resident, raising a family, going to work. In many cases, leaving the city for employment. And went through a leadership class through the chamber. Learned a lot about our city and learned about all the great amenities and resources we have. And was asked if I was interested in volunteering on a commission. I said yes, and kind of the rest is history. I've just completed my third year on city council. And so looking forward to finishing strong with this first term and look forward to continuing to serve this community. My thing is that there's so many talented people in this community that believe in so many different initiatives. And for me, one of the big reasons why I decided to run was that as a residential taxpayer, I felt that we can always increase the business tax base of our community. And that's kind of been a big part of my involvement on city council is to encourage and promote and make it easier for development to occur, commercial development to occur in our community, to increase that tax base and diversify that tax base. And so I think we've made significant strides the last few years. We've had a collective, great group of council members and mayor where we've really truly accomplished a lot of things that there were somewhat kind of stumbling blocks for previous councils. Working new contracts with our union personnel, firefighters and police was a big accomplishment for us. The fact that we were able to push along some initiatives like the downtown renovation for a market, a farmer's market. It's been a great experience to be part of those meetings, to help nudge it. And to the point where now we have a developer involved is just a great feeling to have been part of that. And others, I mean, I think our park system, we've continued to support our park system to add a new community center, for example, that we negotiated with metropolitan community colleges. So I'm proud of all those things and just being able to help make a difference in many aspects. I love definitely spending time with my family. We have three daughters and they're all fairly active, and some in sports and other extracurricular activities. But for me, I love being outdoors. I love the trails. I love riding my bike. And I love playing golf. And we have awesome amenities and options within our community to have that kind of a lifestyle. This June will be 25 years that my wife and I have lived in Lee Summit and have raised three daughters in this community. I know this city has incredible talented residents that come from all different walks of life. You know, very diverse group of families in our community. That it's so rewarding to be involved on a government level or some kind of civic commission or committee that in many cases you get out of it more than you put in. And I truly live by that and I believe that.
Welcome, everyone. Would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the pledge of allegiance?
Lord, we thank you for bringing us together tonight to serve our community with wisdom and unity. We are grateful for the blessings you placed in our city. And today, we especially give thanks for the opening of Green Street this week. And may it be a place of growth, connection, and opportunity for all who visit. Guide our decisions this evening and let them all, all we do, be for the good of those we serve. Amen.
Again, welcome, everyone. I'm calling to order the City of Lee Summit Regular Session number 46 as amended. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Rader.
Present.
Councilmember Pryor.
Here.
Councilmember Lovell.
Here.
Councilmember Funk.
Here.
Councilmember Carlisle.
Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Member Shields.
Here.
Mayor Potem Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Baird.
Here.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion? I have a motion to adopt the agenda by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Mayor Potem Lopez. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Council discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Passes 8-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the council roundtable. These are items of general interest. Things going on in the community, your district. Councilmember Shields.
It's kind of already been brought up, but Green Street is opening. And we're having the State of the City address and a bunch of amazing opening activities all Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And I'm just really excited for it in my district, obviously. And I'm really proud of this entire council for all the work and staff, for all the work they've put into bringing this reality. It's absolutely amazing.
Yep, the artwork went up today, the murals. It's very exciting. Thank you. Okay, we're going to try to save our energy for the weekend tonight. So I'm going to go on and go to public comments. We have a couple of people here. Ms. Giddings? Either one, whatever one you want to come to, you can choose either one. If you'd rather be at the podium, you can, or you can choose this mic right here. Okay, we do public comment. We... You can address the council on anything that's on the agenda, anything that has to do with operations in the city. Except for those matters that are subject of our public hearing. We don't have any public hearings tonight. You get three minutes. And if you have any materials that you want us to see, just give them to the city clerk and she will then bring them up to us. All right, thank you.
My name is Deborah Giddings. 1015 Southeast Boardner Drive, Lee Summit, on the southwest corner of 50 Highway and Ranson Road. I have lived there for 37 years. In early 2021, our home sustained a severe fire. We lived on Ward Road south of Purcell's during the reconstruction. There were daily trips back and forth on Purcell and Bailey Road across 291, accessing our subdivision from the south. When we moved back in two years later and started using our normal route to Ranson Road, it was very difficult to get there due to increased traffic. I want to talk to you about traffic studies. Bailey Farms is developing on the southwest corner of Ranson and Bailey. Its traffic studies were based on estimates from a traffic engineering handbook and the middle school Princeton Center, senior center that were under construction, and the newly opened Culver's Traffic Studies. Actual traffic counts were not done supposedly due to COVID. There will be over 250 homes and duplexes on lots with significant approval for setback lines and left sizes increasing density. The south property is unplanted, but Summit Home developers tend to put apartments adjoining their developments. Additionally, the application for this development used the 2005 comprehensive plan, not the 2021 Ignite comprehensive plan. I wish I had more awareness about the property in 2021, but I had a house to rebuild and insurance claims at the time. I hope you know where this is heading. Costco. Everyone is thrilled to hear about this, but I have studied the submitted proposal map. Not only looking at Costco traffic flow, but all the development planned that will impact Bailey and 291. I can see no changes to 291 except an additional intersection to the north, which will only push traffic further back to the bridge. The huge plans for the west side of 291 with 307 apartments and all the retail that will flow into that intersection will impact it as well. Where's Purcell Roads fit into the plans? Bailey will be impacted with more new intersections. How about the destruction and construction of 50 Highway and 291 North? Will that be finished or will traffic have to be diverted? Aaron Rollevo will have a huge responsibility reviewing this traffic plan. The area, Olden Village East, is twice the size as the west project. I respectfully request that this development comes before you that an evaluation of very extensive traffic study impact will be done for the immediate area. Bailey Farms will impact the area very soon. My concern is how traffic studies are conducted and evaluated is justified. Oh, one more thing. Why is it there is a need to have huge apartment complexes at every entrance to the city? Looks like this corner will suffer the same fate as the others. The apartments, additional retail, and even unplanted land with Costco will affect the quality of life for people throughout Lee Summit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Vollenweider?
Teresa Vollenweider, 5201 Northeast Maybrook Road. I'm going to talk a little bit about this again. This was something that was put up, the city's presentation, that this would meet R-1 standards, going from Ag to R-1. These are the two lots. There's one lot here. It's divided into two now. Part of it's going to go to this one and this part's going to go to this one. Mayor Baird, you said that on this one that has a driveway to it that's getting attached to this one via a minor plat. This lot already has two sheds on it, a detached garage and a little shed here. You cannot add another detached garage to this piece because it'll be one piece, it'll be zoned R-1, and you can only have for any one or two family dwelling, there shall be permitted one detached garage or storage building shed. That's it! So when you go from Ag to R1 or to any residential, you're limited in those buildings. So you all have taken this property from being nonconforming. It's conforming as Ag, it's conforming. But you're making it nonlawful, nonconforming, and not compliant with your UDO. Why? Why can't those people just get a variance if they want to put a building on and they can't meet the setbacks? Why do they have to go through the process of hiring a surveyor, which they did? This is Brian Hill. He got hired. They got to do a minor plat. They got to go through this rezoning. Is it a money grab? What is it? Why not just allow them to do a variance and keep it conforming by leaving it Ag? Because it is, after all, a subdivision and it's recorded at the county. The subdivision plat has been done. There's been two of them. Now you're going to have a minor plat done and it's going to be inside...
Thank you.
A subdivision plat.
All right, we're going to keep going. We have got a presentation tonight, it's a conceptual presentation, Agenda Item 5A, Financing Plan for the North Land Reserve Properties. Mr. Bushak, you going to start us off?
Yes. Good evening. David Bushak, Chief Counsel of Economic Development and Planning. And let me bring everything back up here. All right, I will get us started tonight. This is, to start with, this is a conceptual presentation. This is a joint conceptual presentation by Land Reserve and city staff. Normally, a conceptual presentation would be primarily the developer talking to you about their development proposal, but this is a, this is a unique presentation that we have tonight, joint presentation, given the extensive work that we have put in with Land Reserve on this project. It was about one year and five months ago, one year and five months ago, that you approved the memorandum of understanding that has been the basis for our collaboration for the last several months. We've worked extensively on this presentation tonight. This presentation, once upon a time, was like 60 slides or so, and so we cut it down substantially, cut it down to about 24 or so slides. It's a large project, and we will start by discussing the scope, the magnitude of this project, but I wanted to mention that we've narrowed the focus of this presentation substantially, and we'll talk about what that focus is and, and what the feedback is that we seek from you tonight, in addition to general feedback, but we have one very specific point that we would like your feedback on tonight. So we've narrowed the focus substantially in this joint conceptual presentation. We're not requesting any formal action by you tonight, as usual with a conceptual presentation, but we will be looking for feedback on one primary point, plus any other feedback that you'd like to give to us after we, after we go through the presentation. So to begin with, our goal is, this is one time where I thought it would be important for us to write out exactly what our goal is for this presentation. Our primary goal is to receive feedback from you in this conceptual presentation regarding the proposed method of funding, the public infrastructure improvements for the northern area of the Land Reserve Property, so the northern approximately 1,000 acres is our focus. And secondly, we would like any other feedback from you as a result of this discussion tonight. We've narrowed the focus down to one primary discussion point, because that is the point that we need feedback from you for us to continue our work with Land Reserve, and that will become more clear as we discuss this tonight. So the format of our presentation, first, I'm going to go through the background for you. The background, since we executed the MOU, what we've been working on, then the Land Reserve Team will be making the conceptual presentation, the conceptual development plan, not going into extensive detail, but still at a conceptual level. And then third, I'll come back to the podium, and we'll be discussing the financing plan, and I'll explain that to you and what it entails. But at that point, I want, I will remind you again that this is the, this is a joint presentation between the city, city staff, and the Land Reserve Team, and so I will be discussing what the funding mechanism is, but it's something that Land Reserve is advancing. And then finally, we'll end on next steps, how we move forward if you provide us the feedback that we're looking for tonight. So to start with, we begin with the background. We start with a map of nearly the entire city. These first set of slides, you may recognize these, you've seen some of these before, but we have updated the data since you saw these last year. The Land Reserve Property, currently owned by Property Reserve, but will be dealing with Land Reserve, and we'll talk about the parties in a moment. Property is owned by Property Reserve, and it shows the two large land masses in the north and the south area of the city. We'll be focusing on the north area tonight. So zooming in on the north area, and this is the map that you'll be seeing on some of the other slides, and this will be our primary focus as we talk about the, the financing plan. The parties that are before you tonight, the same as before, but the names have changed slightly, so we still have the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, that's the primary entity that we're dealing with, and then there's two entities that they have formed that deal with this property. There's Property Reserve, or PR, that's the nonprofit entity that owns the property today, and there's Land Reserve, that's the for-profit entity that will take title to the property and then sell it to other developers for the ultimate development. So Land Reserve is the entity that we'll be talking about tonight. Sometimes I might slip up and say PRI, which is the, the acronym that we've used extensively for many years, but the focus tonight and going forward, we'll be talking about dealing with Land Reserve, so that's the terminology that we'll be using. When we get to Part Two of this discussion tonight, the Land Reserve Team will do individual introductions, but we have Newmark Zimmer, the Pozzanelle Law Firm, Continental Consulting, and Olson Studio that has worked with Land Reserve to prepare a lot of the data and the projections and the information that is, is part of this presentation that you'll be seeing tonight. And then eventually, you'll also be dealing with the developers of the property, once, once those properties are sold and, and projects come forward. The scope of what we're dealing with tonight, the Land Reserve Property is over 4,200 acres, which is over six, larger than 6.5 square miles. The northern, approximately 1,000 acre tract, and then in the south, about 3,140 acres. Lee's Summit, still the sixth largest city in Missouri by land area and population. Interesting fact, there's over 1,000 municipalities in Missouri, and Land Reserve would be about 104 if you measure by land area. So this updated chart shows you, gives you a little background information. You see in the middle column the size of the Land Reserve land mass as compared to some municipalities in Missouri. Raytown and Peculiar are larger, but then you see Oak Grove, Hollister, Green Valley, University City, selected mainly to show you a variety of different populations, all smaller than the area that we're dealing with here. And when we discussed this the first time, the phrase that I used was essentially a city within a city, and that seemed to, that seemed to resonate with the city council, because I heard some people talking about that after the previous discussion last year. And then the numbers at the end, you'll see, that's, that's the ranking by population for size of cities. So we're dealing with a very large land mass, as you're familiar with. The goals of our presentation, the goals of working with Land Reserve, essentially remain the same as we discussed previously, and so this slide is the same, except for the last bullet. We are attempting to be proactive by working with one landowner at this point. We're attempting to determine a long-term infrastructure financing plan, how we go about funding the large-scale infrastructure improvements. We want to avoid a piecemeal approach, as opposed to letting this land transfer to multiple other developers, and then the city council and city staff have to deal with multiple developers and coming up with a plan to fund the large infrastructure projects. So we have a once-in-a-lifetime huge advantage, which is dealing with one landowner for such a large land mass. We have secured some state funding and federal funding, which we'll talk about tonight, and ultimately, we want to make the best long-term decisions. And we recognize that this city council, you're the first city council, maybe the second, I suppose, that's dealing with this. A future composition of the city council will be making decisions on this, but it's a large-scale project that we need to deal with now to set the stage for future action by the city council. And then the final bullet, which we added tonight, we're attempting to establish this ongoing transparent process. There, all of the discussions will occur here in the city council chambers, and we're attempting to be transparent regarding how we're going about funding this, and that's what this discussion is about tonight. So at this point, I will stop, and I will have the Land Reserve Team come to the podium. They will talk about the concept plan that they've been developing and provide some more information on that aspect of this presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council. Very excited to be back in front of you again, especially talking about this project. I do have to do one side note. When I told my wife Kathy that the date of this meeting, and she reminded me that this was my 30th anniversary, and I told her I wouldn't, I wasn't available for dinner tonight, she just smiled, so if you see Kathy, please thank her for that. Before we talk about the conceptual development plan, I would like to have Tyler Buzzwell, who many of you met the last time we were before the council.
What about your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mike Van Buskerk with Newmark Zimmer. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks.
And my wife's Kathy. Did you get that part? Anyway, I would like to have Tyler Buzzwell come up and say a few words, and also introduce the members of the Land Reserve and Property Reserve Team that are here with us today. So with that, Tyler, I'm going to turn it over to you, and then I'll be back up.
Mayor and council members, Tyler Buzzwell, I am the president of Land Reserve. I'm also, excuse me, the global head of land for Property Reserve, so I have titles in both of these entities, the current owner as well as the future owner. And I think what's important to remember about, you know, just to think about who we are as, as an organization. The Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, Property Reserve is the real estate investment company for the reserve funds for the church. That's what it is. So it is a real estate investment company, is a diversified, diversified real estate fund that invests in all sorts of different asset classes. Land Reserve is a wholly-owned subsidiary of Property Reserve, but essentially what we are is we are master planners. We have land assets all over the country, and we do large master-planned communities. So we have, we have active projects in seven different states right now, and this is our first in Missouri, and so far, it's been going fantastically. We really appreciate the city. It's been wonderful to work with staff and a number of you. We really appreciate it. This, this process of us trying to build a great community, we feel like the way that we are successful is if the community is better, right? That's what we're trying to accomplish. And, and if we do it right, we're also going to get a rate of return, right? So this all goes together, but really, if we're not building a community, then we're not doing it right. And we think the city, the vision, the staff, the way people are thinking about this project has just been wonderful, and we think it's, it literally is a model of the, around the country, when we've done it right, it's, it's like the City of Lee's Summit has been thinking about it. So we just thank you, really appreciate the time, and even just being here again. I was here last March. So for those of you that don't know my team, I thought it would be helpful to kind of put a, you know, face with some of the names. Like I said, I, I run the land team, so I run Land Reserve, but I also run the land team for Property Reserve. So you'll kind of hear that, those two names. So let me just give you a little quick introductions. Danny Owen right here, he actually works for Land Reserve, and he is over our assets in Missouri, Colorado, and Arizona, so he's over kind of all of our assets here on the Land Reserve land development side. Jace McQuivvy is the head of, for Property Reserve, and he actually nationwide helps my team on the Property Reserve side, which again is sort of land assets on Property Reserve. And then Tyler Heath right here, so 50% chance if you just call and say, hey, Tyler, you know, you're, you're going to get, you know, good chance you're going to get it right. Tyler also works for Property Reserve on Jace's team, he's over assets in Indiana, Missouri, and Utah. So they're here all the time. I'm here every couple of months, but they're here almost every month, sometimes a couple of times a month. As of late, meeting with the city twice a month, and a lot of that's virtual, but a lot of time, a lot of energy has gone into this, and, you know, I'm here, but it's really a tribute to them and the hard work they've put in, and the other, you know, local folks, Kurt and, and Mike and others that have been great to work with. So just wanted to give you that brief introduction, and yeah, look forward to, to this presentation, and look forward to getting your feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. So expanding on what Tyler said, and Mr. Bushak already said this, but city within a city, and the opportunity to work on the planning of something of this scale has been, has been amazing. This team has been working very closely with city staff. We have been meeting biweekly. A lot of those meetings have been in person, where Land Reserve and Property Reserve team members have been here, meeting here with city hall, with staff. Ryan Elam and multiple department heads have helped put together a lot of the background stuff you see here, you'll be seeing here today. In addition, just touch on Continental Consulting Engineers, who've helped put together a lot of the pricing for the civil, for the infrastructure. Olson Studio, who's our land planner, and then Kurt Peterson and his team, who's been helping as well, especially with the heavy lift of financial modeling that we've all been working on collectively. So as we started the, the land planning, we obviously reviewed the Ignite Comprehensive Plan that many of us worked on for, for a long time. We had shared our thoughts with city staff, got their input, and incorporated that into what we're bringing forward today. What you're going to see on this 1,000 acres is, is a lot of different uses, multiple residential opportunities, mixed-use opportunities, commercial retail, office, medical office, and a section we've reserved for Class A light industrial. You're going to hear about the major infrastructure lift that has to be addressed and open up, to open up this property. I don't know how many times I've been asked, you know, why can't you just sell the property? And it's like, well, we don't have water, we don't have sewer. There's major road infrastructure that has to be addressed. So we're going to be talking about transportation, sanitary sewer lift stations, major water mains, electric and gas, regional stormwater, all these things have to be put into place. So over this period of time, our consultants, city staff and some other consultants working with city staff have been looking at all these items, preliminary sizing some of these major items, and also budgeting costs for their actual construction. And, and one thing I do want to note here is, you know, some of these items, you know, you talk about phasing, and some of these items you really can't phase, and one example I'll speak to is the major water line. So they're, in order to open this property up, we need to construct a water line adjacent to Todd George, all the way from Colburn up to Woodschapel Road, and extend, you know, to complete the loop, because I know somebody back here will want us to complete the loop, we've got to extend it to the west, underneath 470 as well, so you'll see that on some plans here shortly. And then, you know, at the scale of this, we've had a lot of discussions about civic and schools and other development considerations. Parks, you'll see some comments on that. Mr. Snook and his team have been participating in our regular biweekly meetings, a lot of discussion about future park locations, two that you'll see here today in the north property, and there's a lot being talked about in the South Lee Summit property. City staff evaluated police and fire potential needs, and let them address that as needed. You know, a lot of discussions with Lee Summit R7 School District. On full buildout of the 4,000 acres, 1,000 on north and 3,000 plus in the South Lee Summit, we've been working very closely with the Lee Summit R7 team, designating areas for future schools, and those discussions are going good. We do have areas designated for all the future schools for full buildout of this property. You won't see a school on the plan we're going to show you here today. There's potential that there might need to be, but I know that the school district's pursuing some other opportunities, and that's their preferred location for where there might need to be a school in, in this side of the district. And the other thing that I want to note before we leave this slide is, everything south of the interchange is in Lee Summit R7 School District, but don't forget, everything to the north is in Blue Springs School District. And while the Blue Springs School District will not be impacted as much from new residential development, as you'll see on the plan, there's a lot of commercial mixed-use plan for the north side. There is a lot of potential commercial coming in within their district, so we haven't had a meeting with them, although we are, actually have one on the calendar that we had to reschedule, but we're going to have a similar discussion with them, so they're, they're fully brought up to speed as well. So proposed land uses. I know this slide throws everybody off, but north is to your left, Woodschapel Road is to your left, you'll see the Strutter Roads interchange right in the middle, and then Colburn Road to your right. The first thing you'll note on here is the phasing plan, those dotted lines, and you'll see Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three. What's driving that is the sanitary sewer basins. So one of the major infrastructure lifts that need to be addressed here is putting in three pumping stations for the full buildout. Our focus right now is on Phase One and Phase Two, to get the pumping stations in for those areas. Just walking through the plan, I'll start maybe right in the middle with their Phase One. What you're seeing there in area marked to C is a combination of commercial-type uses with quite a bit of retail. The south of that, there's a major power line, you'll, between the green and the light gray you see there. South of that power line, we've laid out some light industrial. East of Todd George in Phase One, you see residential-type uses. And then on the north end of that, that kind of pinkish color, that's proposed to be a future neighborhood park area. So that, that's Phase One, and then you'll see on there where you highlighted Lee Summit School District and Blue Springs School District, north to south. Moving to Phase Two.
Yeah.
Yep.
Mr. Van Buskerk, would you go back to Phase One and use your cursor and point to what you call Phase One?
Sure, Phase One's right here.
And then just whenever you're, it's, it's a little bit small font, so whenever you're pointing to the different ones, just kind of use your cursor if you would, so we can kind of follow you.
Happy to. So this is the commercial area I was talking about at the interchange. This is the future light industrial area. This is that power line that I was mentioning, and this is Line Weber Road today. East of Todd George, this is where you've got residential, with the future neighborhood park planned at the far north end, actually, that's in Phase Three. This is planned as more senior housing. I will say, just a general statement on this property, I will say, just a general statement on this property, there's a lot of topography to deal with here, and so from a land planning, we took that into account. Obviously, adjacent to the property to the east is Lake Jacomo in the park, so we've gravitated all the residential uses to be adjacent to the park, and you'll see some trail connections here shortly that we were trying to incorporate as well. And then moving to phase two, south of Line Weber Road, so back here, there'd be a future pumping station in this general vicinity for phase one, and then another pumping station in this general vicinity for phase two. Additional light industrial area planned here, regional detention for that, as well as some other areas. This is planned to be a regional park, approximately 68 acres. And then east of that, what you see in gray is all single-family residential planned property. And then lastly, down here at the intersection of Todd George and Colburn, we do introduce some little higher density residential, and then we see potential for a commercial node of some type at Todd George and Colburn as well. One thing I do before I leave that, we do, I thought it'd be helpful for you all to get an idea of the scale, so this table highlights the acres, the gross acres for each of those proposed uses, broken out by land use. And I guess I should also touch on phase three. So phase three, as I said, is future, but from a planning perspective, we wanted to make sure that we addressed it today. So in phase three, you know, working with the Ignite Plan shows a combination of mixed use in the green area, and then in the yellow, that's more of a town center type area. So, we followed the plan, the Ignite Plan for what was proposed in those areas. Site utilities, I touched on this a little bit, but pumping stations, phase one, phase two, phase three. Water line, extension along Todd George Road, all the way up, and then that loop back under 470. That's, that's kind of the minimum we've got to do to get things going up in this area, and then, as you all know, there's a plan for future widening of Todd George, which would be instrumental as well. And then lastly, trail connections, parks and trails. I touched on, Lake Jacomo is immediately to our east. If you didn't know, there's a great trail system through Lake Jacomo, so we've tried to make sure we were making those connections, and then also looked at how we can incorporate trails running through the existing streamways, or adjacent to the existing streamways, to make the connections to the regional park, and then the future neighborhood park, as well as areas where we've planned for holding out some green areas as well. So, I'd summarize that there's been quite a bit of work that's taken place, both from the city side and the Land Reserve side as well. We do have a similar process, by the way, going on for South Lee Summit for the 3,000 plus acres down there. You know, that's just another scale that's hard to comprehend when you really think about it, but those, that is continuing, and as you'll hear later, we hopefully be back in front of you some point soon with some thoughts to share on that as well. So with that, I will turn the presentation over to Mr. Buschak, but I and other members of the Land Reserve team are here to answer any questions as we get to the end. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we move on to part three of our discussion, and this basically continues right where Mr. Van Busker left off. This slide is essentially a bit of a repeat of what he just showed you, focusing on the first bullet. We're focusing on the arterial roads, pump stations, stormwater, and the major water mains, as the major infrastructure costs, and then we've also taken into account the other items which he's discussed, so I won't elaborate any further on that. Now we get to the costs. This is a tally of the major infrastructure costs to serve the north area. So you have the major transportation improvements, and the major transportation improvement is Todd George Parkway, which is the spine of the northern area. Sanitary sewer with, which are the three pump stations that he pointed out on a previous slide, and other related costs, 34 million. Stormwater improvements, about 1.7 million. Major water mains, 2.6. Electric, at close to 4 million, and then a large contingency to, as standard to take into account, the uncertainties and the situation that we're at now, we have a substantial contingency factored in. Then we get to the secured funding that the city has already secured. So the major transportation, that's the city council, that's through the capital improvements plan. That is the funding for Todd George Parkway. And then for the sanitary sewer, this is funding that the city has secured from the state for funding the major sewer pump stations in the northern area. So the city has, the city comes to the table solving effectively about 45 and a half million of those costs. And so this then tallies up what the remainder is. So this is a repeat of the numbers that you just saw on the previous slide, and here's the remainder. So this is the target of what we're attempting to finance, and this is the focus of our discussion tonight for the north area and the funding plan. It's about 57.5 million in total cost, that's our focus. So now we get to the most challenging part, and I will say that, I'll start by saying this, I have probably spent more time thinking about how to explain the next discussion point to you, and what I need to say for this slide than any other slide I've ever used in any presentation ever. That's how long and how hard we have thought about this, this funding plan. And I'm going to attempt to explain what I think has happened in Lee Summit for the last 30 years and how we funded public improvements, and we'll see if I can pull this off. I've structured it as a series of questions to walk through what I think has happened in Lee Summit historically, and we'll get to the explanation. So the first question, very basic question, how has the city traditionally funded public improvements? It's a pretty simple answer in my mind. The city has funded some of those improvements, and then we have required developers to pay for the remainder. Pretty straightforward. So, what does that mean? And this is where the explanation gets a little challenging. How has the city traditionally required developers to fund public improvements? What is, what is that story? What has the city done? What is our policy? If there's a policy statement that you can attach to this? And I was, for many weeks, I was struggling to figure out how to explain that to you, and then it dawned on me, sometimes the most difficult questions that you face, the answer is sort of staring at you in the face sometimes. And so, this is the second opportunity to bring my book. When we were talking about the parked impact fees, I brought my book, and I talked to you about the fact that this book deals with exactions, impact fees, and dedications shaping land use development and funding infrastructure. And it was impact fees that I brought the book. As I said, this is the one opportunity I may have to ever pull this book out and show you, but I found a better reason. I think the history of what has happened in Lee Summit and how we funded our major public improvements is the first word in the title of my book. It's exactions. So what does that mean? What's an exaction? An exaction, you're actually very familiar with it. An exaction is a requirement that the city council places on a zoning approval to require developer to build public improvements. That's it. That's an exaction. You do that all the time, and the city council has done that repeatedly for 30 years. The city council traditionally requires developers to pay for the major public improvements that are needed for a development that the city hasn't funded yet. So the city essentially says, yes, your zoning is approved, but these public improvements are needed. So, as, and example, here's a simple example of that. Back in 1998, a city was faced with a major shopping center proposal. A major shopping center, about 95 acres. The entrance to the shopping center is on the south side, so there were major arterial infrastructure improvements that were needed to build that shopping center. And then on the west side, there was a major arterial road that had to be moved over and expanded. On the north side of the shopping center is an interstate, and on the east side of the shopping center is a state highway. And we needed major transportation improvements, stormwater, water, sewer, all of these improvements. And so going through the development review process, the city said, to build this shopping center, we need all of these public improvements that the city hasn't funded yet, and the city doesn't have plans to fund. Developer said, understood, I need some assistance from the city to fund those public improvements. All of those conditions that the city imposed on that shopping center were exactions, and that's what you do all the time. You impose exactions on developers to fund public improvements that the city either hasn't funded yet, or it's not on our capital improvements plan. Can anybody guess the shopping center I've been talking about? Summit Woods. Some, very good, Summit Woods. That was the story of Summit Woods around the year 2000. Substantial public improvements, Chipman Road, Prior Road had to be relocated, flyovers to Blue Parkway, major off-ramp improvements from Highway 50, substantial public improvement costs that the city could not fund. So the city imposed exactions on the developer in the form of conditions, which you use all the time when you approve zoning. And so the legal basis for this, it's also very simple. The city, the city council can condition any zoning approval on something that you could otherwise deny that approval for. So in the case of a large shopping center or any project, the first line of analysis is, these, the public improvements are inadequate to serve your development, you have to build them. That's the exaction. You have a choice, and the city council has a choice. You can either say no to this project because there's inadequate public infrastructure to serve the development, or you can impose exactions and the developer has to pay for it, and that leads to the collaboration frequently between the city and the city council, the city, to fund these public improvements because the city isn't ready to fund them yet. That's what we've been doing for 30 years. That's how we get here. So then the next question that logically follows from this, why have we been doing that? What's the reason? That's, that's where I naturally go when I walk through this process. I think the answer to that can be summarized in one word: timing. And that's kind of built in with the explanation I just provided. When a project comes forward and the city has not funded the public improvements yet that are necessary to serve that development, it's a timing issue. The city council is essentially saying, either this development doesn't happen, or it does happen at your discretion, at your choice developer, if you come up with a way to fund these public improvements. Which is essentially saying that this project isn't ready to be developed unless we have additional public improvements to serve that project, which sometimes can be solved by the city, but often needs to be solved by the developer. And the legal basis, as I said, is you could either deny that development, or for 30 years, the city council has routinely approved those developments with conditions with, which are the exactions. So that's how I, I think we've gotten here today. That is all relevant for the funding plan that we've developed and we're about to present to you. So, I will pause there and make sure everybody understands that it's very simple, but I think that's the summary of how we funded public improvements historically in the city for 30 years. I think everybody understands that concept, so I will move on. So now we get to the most important part of this discussion tonight. This table encapsulates what the request is, and this is what we need your feedback on. So I'll walk through this slowly to make sure everybody understands what we're looking at here. So, first I'll start with the columns. The first column is land uses. We are focusing on land uses as both the north and the south areas develop out, and we're going to be focusing on the funding plan based on a different treatment for each land use. The second column here is timing, and it's essentially the first 10 years and the second 10 years associated with each land use. And then the remaining columns are treatment of tax revenues. So the yellow column, taxes, it's labeled taxes or pilots. This is, this notes the amount of taxes, property taxes in the yellow area, that would flow through to the taxing districts with this structure. Next column, the green, tax redirection, we would use a technique to redirect those taxes, which you, you're familiar with, you've approved projects using these tools many times, to redirect a certain portion of the real property taxes to fund the public improvements. And then we have a sort of placeholder column, the blue column, tax redirection for local public improvements, but I'll get to this number down here. And then finally, this is an additional request by Land Reserve, specifically abatement as a business attraction method for two of the land uses. So then we can go through each land use and talk about what the proposal is for, for the treatment of each land use. First, starting with industrial. This proposal is essentially like the Skinnell and the other large-scale industrial projects that you've approved recently. For the first 10 years, this is what the property tax, this is how the property tax revenues would flow. So 5% to the taxing districts, 20% diverted to pay for these public improvements, and then 75% is Land Reserve's request for business attraction. And then during the second 20-year period, years 11 through 20, I'm sorry, the second 10-year period, years 11 through 20, these numbers change, and again, this is equivalent to packages that you've approved for large-scale industrial in the past. Multi-family, first 10 years, 25% payment to the taxing districts, 25% diversion for funding the regional public improvements, and then the Land Reserve's request is abatement, attraction for the remaining 50%, and then during the second 10-year period at 100%. One of the questions that I received as we were reviewing this is, why are these two, they kind of look like they're grouped together? The answer is because both of these land uses, industrial and multi-family, have an abatement component according to Land Reserve's request. Then we get to office, and you can see how these lay out. 75% for the full 20 years flowing to the taxing districts, 25% diversion to pay for the large-scale public improvements, and then the same with retail, and no abatement for business attraction. Then the two categories, the two legs of this funding structure are the real property tax redirection that I just walked through, and, and this is significant, a new community improvement district over the entire area for the duration that is needed to fund those, to fund the public improvements. And, we're working conceptually at 50% being devoted to the large-scale public improvements that I just discussed, and then 50% for the localized public improvements as each project comes in. These would still need to be actual public improvements, but they're the more localized improvements that aren't on the list that I just showed you. So in essence, this is Land Reserve's proposal. I'm doing the presenting of this for the explanation and for continuity purposes tonight, but city staff, working with Land Reserve, this is essentially what's being presented to you. And so this slide, the red box, this red box correlates to the first thing that I pointed out on the first slide. This is precisely what we need your feedback on tonight. If we receive no other feedback for you, from you, if you're not prepared to talk about anything else, our goal is hopefully to receive feedback from you on whether this approach is acceptable to move forward. And, we'd like your feedback on everything else. So whatever your thoughts are about this, and your thoughts are about the whole approach, and anything you've heard tonight, we'd like your feedback. But we intentionally structured it this way because there, there are lots of other questions that we will eventually have, there's lots of issues, but we wanted to narrow our focus down to this specific item. Is this an acceptable funding structure to the city council for us to move forward? That's our primary question. So, at this point, if I were you, and this is the, sort of my logical thought process, if I were you and I were faced with that question, and that type of, that structure, as an elected official, how do you analyze this? How do you, you know, what's, what's the framework for you to think about how you provide your feedback? I would never presume to tell you how to think, that's obvious, I've told you many times, my goal is to make sure you make a fully informed legally defensible decision. But I think these are some of the primary things that you might think about when you're analyzing this proposal and what you think of it. First, the risk to the city. There's the usual financing and funding risks and construction risks, and I think you could basically collapse those risks down to underperformance. So there's always a risk that this development might not happen, might not happen as projected, might not happen as fast as projected, there's always, call it a construction risk. There's always the risk that due to factors that none of us can even predict tonight, development won't happen as fast as, as everybody would like, as Land Reserve would like. But one of the goals is to bring the land to its highest and best use for the benefit of the taxing districts and benefit of the citizens. I think we're operating under that assumption. But, to really get to the risk, what is the risk to the city? There's no debt being requested from the city. The city is not being requested to issue any bonds or undertake any sort of debt. But you'll notice, that has been replaced by the funding that we've already secured. I showed you a few slides back, that the city has already secured substantial funding for the major public improvements. Once upon a time, and we were talking about this structure, before we came to that realization that the city is going to be advancing substantial funding for the northern area, we were talking about a scenario where maybe the city did issue debt. Maybe the city was putting some money on the table, so to speak, along with Land Reserve's money, to fund these public improvements, but this structure does not involve any city debt, does not involve that risk level. So then I think the primary risk is, will they perform? Will the development happen? And there's some other risks too, but the primary risk has been removed with this structure. Then the benefits, I think you would naturally ask, what are the benefits to the city if you use this approach? I mentioned that it brings land to, in theory, the highest and best use, that's what I believe Land Reserve is proposing, and I think they have a history of doing that in, in other locations, and they've talked with you about that. It will bring, it will, it will develop this land. So we go from a state where we have a thousand acre tract and a 3,100 acre tract, which has effectively caused leapfrog development in the southern part of the city, where we have a chunk of the city very far south, developed before this land mass, this 3,000 acre land mass in the middle. So it completes the development of the city, it brings the land, in theory at least, and hopefully to its highest and best use, and it starts generating tax revenue for the taxing districts. Now, one of the drawbacks, I suppose the risk, on the risk calculation, is you have taxing districts saying, you're going to be diverting some, and you're going to be doing this too, you're going to be diverting some of the property tax revenues to help pay for the major public improvements. But if you think back to the discussion that I went through with the difficult slide, that's what the city's been doing for 30 years, and I think that's how we finally settled on this. And I think that's how we finally settled on this approach. So the benefits are substantial in terms of finally developing this land and generating tax revenues. And even though during the first 10 or 20 years of each of those landmasses, some of the property taxes would be diverted, one of the things that land reserve has pointed out to us over the many years of discussion is, this land stays in the city, and once it's fully on the tax rolls, it will be generating tax revenues for all the taxing districts at full freight. So, the question is, back to this slide, are you willing to proceed with this approach, knowing that the city's been doing it for 30 years, if we're successful funding these major public improvements? And then, the method, the method is essentially one of two methods, probably chapter 100, maybe land clearance for redevelopment authority, but it's techniques that we've used many times over, and techniques that you're familiar with, which we can talk about when the time comes. And so, then we get to possibly the last question, timing. And the real question you might be thinking of is, why now? Why is this appropriate to do now? And, one of the, I think the major answer to that question, I've already mentioned, this is an extremely rare opportunity to be working with one landowner before they start selling and developing. If they were to start selling and start developing, we would be dealing with these issues, times I don't know how many developers, we'll find out over time. But, this is an opportunity to partner with one party, which is a huge benefit to the city at this point, where everybody's at the table and everybody's ready to proceed, and that feeds back into one of the primary goals that we talked about, which is avoiding a piecemeal approach, which is in essence, how land has sort of been developed over time in the city, because we've never had the opportunity to work with one landowner on such a large landmass. So, next steps, and this slide is fairly self-explanatory. The first bullet is the most important bullet: we need your feedback. We can't proceed unless we have your feedback, so that's what we need tonight. Depending on what your feedback is, we'll work on refining the financing plan for the north area. And, again, depending on your feedback, we will proceed with the south area, using the feedback that you provide to us. Property reserve, and that is the correct acronym in this case, property reserve is negotiating with the school district for the sale of land for additional schools, both in the north and the south area, so that is well underway. And then, the next step, again, depending on your feedback, pre-application meetings would start with city staff to start looking at prospective projects with prospective developers that land reserve would be selling the property to, and then we can talk about future council actions. So that brings us to a conclusion. That is, that is our presentation. You know what we need your feedback on, and we're certain you may have many questions, and we hope you have a good discussion tonight.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Shields would like to start us off.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to say thank you guys for the amount of work that's gone into this already. I know when we've talked about this, kind of in broad strokes in the past, we have talked about wanting to have a master plan for this whole area. We want to have the opportunity to be proactive and make a good plan that'll work out well for the city's future. And I think you can tell that you took that sentiment from the council, and that's, I feel like, what you're trying to accomplish here, and I like that. I think overall, I like the concept of this in terms of, we can see what the, no matter what goes in here, some of these major improvements need to happen, road improvements, sewer, water, there's nothing you can develop there without that. And, finding the revenue streams that are in, that are similar to things we've approved for these kind of projects in the past, that are in keeping with our past practices in terms of the level of incentives, that makes sense to me. The way that we always talk about these in terms of, this land has been sitting vacant for the entire history of the city, and it's not generating basically any revenue at this point. I'm sure it's generating some nominal tax revenue, but not to the extent that it will.
It is actually taxable, and yes, some nominal revenues.
Right. But like any vacant land, it's generating, I assume, tens or hundreds of dollars a year, not millions of dollars a year of tax revenue, and it's not providing amenities to our residents, it's not providing huge parks that we're talking about, all that kind of stuff, it's just sitting there. So, I think, we, I know that we've all been excited to see this property developed, and I think that it makes sense to have a public-private partnership to make that happen, because it's just not benefiting the city as it is. So I'm good with all that. I'm sort of curious about how this plays out, right? So typically, when we do this kind of a thing on the smaller scale, you know, say, they want to put in a mixed-use development, and we say, you need to put a stoplight here and a road here, but we also get into a lot of the details of what the actual development looks like, and we say, you know, as long as we're in a private-public-private partnership with you, we kind of have some more discretion of what the design looks like. How does that play out here? Because if we've already sort of approved the incentives upfront, would this come with a set of design guidelines that are pre-approved by the city? Would we still be approving each individual PDP? Like, how does that play out over time when you've already said, yes, we'll give you the incentive, but we also still need to see what's actually going to go there?
Yes. So, the development process will follow the sequence that you're used to. So, land reserve will eventually be selling to other parties, and those parties will bring forward their developments. They will be, the process they will use, and the vetting that we do, and the consideration that you give to each of those projects, will be exactly like you're used to, which is each project will come in, there'll be a pre-application meeting to identify the site-specific public improvements that are needed, but if we move forward with this funding mechanism, we will have already funded the major infrastructure costs that are associated with getting this development out of the ground. So, I'm talking in concept because we're not focused on a specific development. When each project comes in, in the north area, city staff will do its normal review, and there will be an analysis of what specific public improvements are needed to serve this development here. That will essentially be all the improvements that we've already talked about, the large-scale improvements, traffic, sewer, stormwater, water, and what other than localized improvements are necessary, that will be communicated to the developer, but we will have already solved the major infrastructure issues at that point, which is the advantage of working with one property owner and putting down a community improvement district, and essentially preapproving, in a manner of speaking, the package that funds the major infrastructure costs. And so, when we get down to the localized infrastructure costs, one of the things that can be relied upon is this item down here, a built-in funding source for the local improvements that would be generated by, if there's retail in that development, the retail would generate funding to pay for those localized public improvements. And, you will also have, we, you, the city council and we, working with you, will have the ability to work in these two columns, and if there are substantial public improvements that are needed for a project that are larger than what this would fund, we obviously will be addressing that. But, the intention is for this funding structure to fund the major public improvements that we've discussed.
I guess, when I look at this, I see, I see a benefit for the developers, and as they're trying to bring in individual projects to say, you know, you don't have the uncertainty of not knowing whether your CID is going to be improved, you don't have the uncertainty of knowing whether or not your, you know, 50% tax abatement's going to be improved, as long as the project that you bring in meets, you know, the approval of the city and you get a good PDP, like you, that's one less hoop that you have to jump through, one less thing to stress out about.
Correct.
I guess I'm just trying to understand, a lot of times, we use that as sort of leverage to get the kind of design that we're looking for. So if the incentives are all already approved, does that impact the ability of council to have more say in that? Or is that still going to happen when they need to figure out the local improvements? How does that play out?
So I think the general answer to your question is no. I don't think that will impair your ability to do the things that you're thinking about when each of those projects come forward. However, I think one of the things that would be good for you to hear about, and I'll have somebody, I'll ask somebody from land reserve to come up here and speak to this, I think as the master developer, land reserve puts a package of covenants on the property, that may address a lot of the items that you may be thinking about. So I'll have them come up here and speak to that in just a moment. But, I think the most basic answer to your question is the zoning process, and the process that you're used to when a rezoning or PDP, both, application comes forward is, you will have the same amount of discretion that you always do, and now that I'm hearing this point of feedback, I think one of the things that we could do is, when we are preparing and you are acting on the items that are necessary to put this financing plan in place, I think we could include, I'm sort of doing this on the fly now, I think we could include some language in those contracts that gives you the discretion that you would like on those issues. I know that sounds vague, but that's a way of saying, yes.
Part of this is I just want to understand what it looks like. Personally, I think we should be a little bit more hands-off on a lot of these decisions, but I just want to understand what it looks like.
Sure.
Like, I don't think that it should be my job to tell someone what color their building should be, like that's, you know, as long as it meets our codes and it's safe and it has the infrastructure that it needs, but I'm just kind of curious how this impacts our normal process.
So I think the covenants that land reserve is likely, or maybe does require, they can address that for you a little bit.
Yes. Yes, Councilmember Shields, that's a great question, and when we develop these large communities, essentially what we do is, we do a layer on top of what the city requires. So, obviously, they would have to go through the same process that, you know, whatever's required with you, and we record CCNRs on all of these projects that require, there's certain uses, because ultimately, you know, our owner is a church, you know, we're making money, there's certain objectionable uses that, even if the city would require it, we would not require it, and we will not let certain objectionable uses, so that's always in there. Certain design standards, we build that in, and we have the right, as the master developer, to approve what it is that they're doing. So obviously, the city has certain discretion on that. We also maintain discretion on that, because we want it to be a high standard. Our first couple of developments, we know that sets the standard for the entire community, right? So we, and as part of that, we require that they construct within a certain amount of time, and we also require that they develop what they say they're going to develop. And if they don't, we have the right to take it back. So all of that is very important to us, because, you know, think about it, if we sell 100 acres to some retail developer, and they're not meeting, you know, kind of the quality standards or the type of tenants we're looking for, that impacts our 900, you know, the balance of our 900 acres and the value of that. So, so we monitor that all the way through. Essentially, our CCNRs say, as long as we own property in this area, we always have the right to essentially opine on what any buyer is doing. So, exactly to your point, we appreciate, whatever the city requires, we'll follow that process, and layered on top of that is, we look at everything, make sure it continues to be consistent with kind of the quality, execution, you know, community enhancement that we're trying to complete as the project on the whole.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
As Mr. Bushig, as far as the level of incentive goes, I guess without knowing everything that goes in there, you can't at this point calculate what percentage of the total project cost this is, or anything like that, that we usually kind of see? Are we too, are we too far out from actual projects to?
Very good question. I actually proposed developing a slide that attempted to show you that information, and we decided that this slide here is probably the best we can do at this point. I attempted to take all of this data and put it into a format like you're used to seeing, and to show you precisely that calculation. We've done a ballpark calculation. Kurt and I, Mr. Peterson and I, have discussed this also, and if we were to pick a percentage right now, and to be clear, what I'm talking about is, what percentage is this number of the total project cost? And, how does it, so if you were to say that this, if you were to call this an incentive as opposed to the financing package, it would be about 15%, 15 to 16%.
Okay.
That number may change as numbers continue to evolve and things get more certain.
But it's helpful to get in order.
Right now, we're at about 15%.
Sure. Okay. And then, in terms of, like, these seem like pretty much in line with what we've done in the past, do you, when you put together, like, you know, years 1 through 10, you know, 5% pilot, 25% pilot, 100% pilot, is that based on, I know you're trying to solve for a particular number, but also trying to keep it in line with kind of our normal practice in these kind of projects, or do you feel like it is in line?
I would say yes, with respect to industrial, yes, to some degree on multifamily, but we have a lot of examples of that that we could talk about. And then, for the, for the office and retail, I think the major benefit is probably the sales tax, and, again, their request is the 25% diversion to pay for the public improvements for a period of 20 years. Depends on which project we wanted to talk about and compare this to, but a lot of our major proj, so I gave you the one shopping center example of Summit Woods, if we were to talk about our other large-scale projects, Summit Fair, Streets of West Prior, Discovery Park, Oldham Village, you'll find that a lot of those projects and the numbers associated with how we got to, and how the developer got to, funding the public improvements associated with that project, are probably in this ballpark, when you take into account the incentives that the city council has traditionally provided in response to the exactions that I talked with you about, and the burden that we place on developers to fund those public improvements.
You mentioned sales taxes, is there any sales tax redirection, or just the real property tax and the CID?
Do you want to speak to that? I'll have Mr. Peterson address that.
Kurt Peterson here on behalf of applicant, Councilmember Shields, the answer is no. Just the add-on sales tax, which is the bottom row, but no sales tax redirection.
The CID. Right. Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood. Okay. I think at the high level that we're at right now, in terms of this really being pretty conceptual, because we're, there's a lot more negotiation to be done, I think this makes a lot of sense. I do like that the, there's not any abatement on the single family, because that's what's going to drive school attendance and, you know, making sure that we're funding the school districts enough to support the additional kids. But overall, I think this makes a lot of sense, and I would, I'd like to see us continue down this path, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lovell.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for all the work they put into it. I think it is an ideal scenario, having the master developer, and kind of putting these things together and trying to wrap my head around kind of the redirection. And I know we're supposed to focus on the, on the green side, but just if I'm understanding this right, on the left side, the taxes, so like, for the taxes pilots, payments to taxing districts, so you're saying, when you say 100% single-family residential, you're saying 100% of those taxes go to, they're not being redirected at all?
Correct.
Okay. And you're saying, like, industrial, multifamily, 25% of the taxes would get, so like, if it's, let's say it's $100.
$25.
$25 of that.
Correct.
Okay. And then, years 11, 20 goes back to the full roll, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I was a little bit confused, because I saw like 100% and I thought that was like so.
Yeah. So what that means is 100% of the taxes flow to the taxing districts.
And then, just out of curiosity, like, so there's obviously a delta that, you know, we're trying to account for with the public infrastructure improvements. What happens when that dollar is met?
When the public improvements are funded?
Yeah. Like, does it, is it ongoing, or is it just enough to meet the needs for the public infrastructure?
Yeah. I guess the answer to that question is.
It's usually like, I think in other ones, they turn off.
They turn off. Yes. I mean, the simplest answer is, this structure will turn off when all of the major public improvements are funded. There would be no reason to continue it. And so, if there's a scenario where, let's say, you say yes, and we implement this structure, and it pays off in, you know, two-thirds of the time that we anticipated, well, the structure would collapse, and, except for any other abatement that the city, the city council's approved for a specific project over here, once the major regional public improvements are funded, this structure would collapse, and the properties would go back on the tax rolls at full taxes.
Gotcha. And so, like in the industrial, in the 75%, they get this built, they're trying to attract a tenant, able to activate that to keep the rent rate in line to attract that tenant, that's kind of how that works over on the right.
That's the justification for that, that component of the request.
And then, I mean, I'm assuming there are assumptions made on like, like each pocket, like, because this is related to property tax, I mean, the cost of each item, like, are there assumptions being made as to what, you know, like, here's a multifamily, like, what if, and then, what if, I guess, like, you anticipate it to be one thing, and then, like, it comes before us or whatever, and somehow that crawls up in value, that the tax is still a percentage, you see what I'm saying? Like, so what, it's 100 million and we projected 50 million, now there's.
If I'm following.
Yeah. I guess saying is, like, you're making projections on what you think the total cost of construction, the real estate values will be once they're complete.
Yes. That's right. And, so, one of the things.
What if they're higher in one area than we thought they were going to be?
That's a good point. So, so if the property taxes, so one of the variables in this whole system, which we've talked about extensively, is the county's valuation of the property. That's a giant unknown. So going into this, we have to make projections regarding what we think the property would be valued at. We've talked to you extensively, at least in Jackson County, about how they follow the 90% rule. They told us that they attempt to put property on the tax rolls at 90% of the total project They told us that they attempt to put property on the tax rolls at 90% of the total project costs, which they have been doing since they told us that. But that's a variable that we will have to deal with as we move through this.
Well, I, I mean, I'm glad to talk through it because I think I understand it more now. I think it's a, I think it's a pretty good plan. I do like the idea that each, that you guys have certain CCRs that you're wanting to meet, that we still have some purview over what that looks like and feels like when they're bringing those in, I'm assuming. So in general, I would, I would be in support of what you, what you put here based on the, you know, I would say limited information, but the information that we have currently. So, thanks. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you. So, Mr. Bushak, help me understand, so I understand the ask for incentive, but can you help me understand what, and I know it's going to be hard to say, but what, looking at this and having to make an eventual decision on this, what is the benefit to the city? Like, what's our return on investment in this? And I know you mentioned, you know, there's possible risk, and yes, there is. So, you know, I'm thinking risk of, it's nice to work with one planner, however, when we do a smaller scale, I feel like there's more guarantee and we're incentivizing with knowing the full plan and, you know, that we're incentivizing. Whereas here, I feel like we're kind of blindly going to be approving, but what is, what is our benefit? What should make us want to say yes to this?
So when I was walking through the benefits, I think it's the fact that we're dealing with one developer now as opposed to having to deal with this issue with multiple developers. Don't want to lose sight of that. Secondly, I think land reserve's goal is to bring the property to the highest and best use for its citizens. If you read the church's approach to land development, their goal is to bring land to its highest and best use for the benefit of its congregation. And we're sort of operating under the assumption that the city council wants the same for the citizens of Lee Summit. We want to, if this land is going to be developed, we want to bring it to its highest and best use. And this presents an optimum situation to do that when we're working with one known landowner who implements the additional controls that you just heard about. There's no debt that's being requested. That's, that lessens the risk. That could be considered an advantage because there could be scenarios where, for example, if you say no to this or if we weren't presented with this opportunity and it was more of a piecemeal development, I think we would be dealing with this question, and the city council would be dealing with this question many times over. And it would be much more difficult to come up with a funding plan. And it would be in pockets to address these concerns as opposed to, the major benefit is, if you say yes and we're able to implement this successfully, it pays for all of the major public improvements, which prevents each sub-developer or landowner that they sell to coming forward and saying, I need incentives for this package of improvements here. And developer over here says, I need this package of improvements for over here. That's what happened over the last 30 years. This is an opportunity to develop this on a large scale, pay for the larger public improvements. And then when each of those projects come in, the only thing we're dealing with is the blue column. What are your localized public improvements? Do you have any special needs? But we won't be negotiating with those individual developers for these large-scale public infrastructure components, which is what we've been doing for 30 years. So I think that encapsulates the benefits for the city.
So worst case, just so we're, we have full knowledge of every scenario. So we incentivize the infrastructure, say whatever could happen, doesn't pan out. What does that look like for us in that case?
So that's the construction risk that I, I mentioned. And so one of the next steps, if you say yes to this structure, we will be proceeding with the financing and we'll be putting a financing package together that actually comes up with the money to fund these public improvements using this structure. There'll be actions that are required of the city council. And I think we'll have more answers for your questions then. And at the same time, projects will start to come forward. We'll be having pre-application meetings with developers, the actual developers of these projects. You'll start to learn about those and I think the process will start to evolve. Not sure if that answers your question, but I think that's, that's the best answer we have at this point.
Okay, thank you. And then to Councilmember Shields' point, she was discussing, you know, like we usually can say more when an individual project comes to us, like we would like to see more of this or whatever. We can, I mean, if they're coming to us, we can technically still do that because there's still this incentive that they will be getting. So we could still address it the same way technically because they will be getting an incentive that we.
That's what I was attempting to say in response to Councilmember Shields' questions, but I may not said it very well. The answer is yes. I think we still have that ability.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Tim Lopez.
Thanks, Mayor. Mr. Bushak, I won't repeat everything that's been said. Like everyone else, though, I do appreciate the presentation and you all taking all this time to get to this point. I know several years back when you all announced that you would be at least entertaining, putting it on the market, created a lot of excitement in this community. So we appreciate that. And this is a process, a very complex process. So we, we get that. And tonight is just conceptual. We're not going to define anything specifically tonight. And so I have to preface my comments by saying that. I appreciate the way you outlined benefits, timing, risk and all that kind of stuff. Without a doubt, without, no doubt, the master plan approach, comprehensive approach, one landowner, one developer, makes every, all the sense in the world. So those are all big pluses and benefits. I think the risks, there's always the risk. This body's always dealing with the risk. That's why we get paid the big bucks up here. And that being said, I think the phases, the phased approach is key. I think, I think you would agree probably, and that's what you do, that you're the expert, that by phasing it in, as a city, that's a big ask. If you can put the other screen that shows the total cost, the public improvement cost, the 103 million, that's, that's a big number. And in reality, if I'm reading this correctly, in reality, I mean, we, we have the secured city funding, the 45 million through CIP and the other state money we received. But in reality, we're asking the remaining amount, the 57 million, just to be transparent, right? We're asking that to be calculated in phases over a 20-year period, per se. So really, you're asking us today with this conceptual for us to approve the 103 million? Or to consider that?
Yes.
So I think that's important to be specific about that. And obviously, I am in favor of this, for us to continue to move forward with this process. But I think like you have in the past, many other projects, I know this is unique, this is very complicated. I know there's not an apple-to-apples comparison with other development projects we've, we've seen. But your spreadsheet table that shows where projects fit in percentage-wise of what the city commits, you know, as far as city portion of a tax incentive, I think somehow if you could kind of come up with something like that.
I almost did. But we decided not to for tonight, but I think that would be a good idea going forward. So as each individual project comes forward, I think we can come up with a metric for you to have a full understanding of how this fits into each project and that project's component of how we're funding these costs.
Right.
I think we can develop a method of showing you that each time a project comes forward in either the north or the south area.
Right. And I get it. I know this is very complex. I mean, like Councilmember Lovell mentioned, there's so many variables and assumptions. We get that. So I can't pin you down with anything like that until you really know what tenants and who's buying what parcels of ground, what specific developers. But, but it would be helpful to us as, you know, I'm hopeful we can, you know, I want to move forward with this, you know, after this conceptual discussion. But if we have that little, little bit more definition and, and like you said, some kind of a table or graph that kind of shows how this compares and truly what potentially we're in, we're in it for from the city perspective. And, but the phased, the phased approach definitely, I think, is a strong benefit that will limit the city's risk, even though we're not guaranteeing anything in this case. But that's all I have for now, Mayor. Thank you all.
Thank you. Councilmember Funk.
Thank you, Mayor. I got, most all my questions, colleagues up here got answered. So in the preliminary development plan, understanding it's all preliminary, is that, and Dave, this may be something the other team wants to answer over there, where we have industrial laid out. That's, that's set. That's what you're going to put there is industrial. If a buyer came in and said, hey, I want to buy that piece of ground and develop it with something else, is that going to change the game of this plan?
Well, as I said, we did, we did follow very closely what the city's comprehensive plan shows in that area. One thing that's on one of those slides. Come back to this. So this is the area referring to, Councilmember Funk. This is immediately opposite the airport. And I don't know if you can see it, but right there is the edge of the flight line of the runway, of that runway. So when we looked at it from a planning standpoint, it seemed like that was the highest and best use for this area down here. I will tell you up here how we ended up with this, north of Line Weber and south, the power lines were kind of a natural barrier. And it seemed as if like we're going to break uses. We really had two locations to do it, the power line or Line Weber Road. But I will tell you, if there was, you know, some great opportunity to do something here in this parcel I'm highlighting right there, yeah, there would definitely be an opportunity to do it.
No, I appreciate that and I appreciate you being upfront about it. But, you know, thank you, Mr. Bushak, for everything you've done. And Mike and your team that you have were here with you. And I would be in support of moving this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you. Sorry, I forgot to ask my other question. So I know, I'm assuming, Mr. Breswell, you've done this in other cities, it sounds like. Okay. So is there a city that maybe you can reference to give us more idea of how land reserve works? And just to see the success that you guys have accomplished in other cities to reference? Okay.
Absolutely. I can't remember if I'd mentioned it when I'd been here a year and a half ago. Surprise, Arizona, we've been working, I guess, Danny or Jase, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe it's 2006 is when we originally did the, we essentially did this in 2006 with the city of Surprise, Arizona. We had over 4,000 contiguous, I guess not all contiguous, but pretty close to each other. Then the recession hit. So we started going full bore, spending a lot of time, a lot of money, and the recession hit. A lot of developers would have tried to sell or whatever else, but that's not what we did. We held on. We worked through the recession and we still stuck to our plan. And so we really didn't start selling in earnest till about 2012. So we're really about 13 years into that project, even though we started the planning, you know, almost 20 years ago. But really have only been selling for 13 years. But again, it was the Great Recession hit and there wasn't much to do about it. But no, I think that's a wonderful example. And if you'd like to connect, we're happy to connect you with the economic development or mayor or any folks at the city of Surprise. I think that's a wonderful example. Again, we have a number of others, but I think that's one, given the size and scope of what we've done there. Similar to here, where you have, we have some industrial areas, we have some great retail areas, tons of residential, we've worked with Toll Brothers, they've got a golf course. I mean, again, it's, it's a long project and we're only about 1,800 acres into the 4,000. So we still have 2,200 acres to go. And again, it's just how it takes time if you're doing it right. I mean, we could sell all of our land today, but to us, that's not right for the community, right? And so we've, we've been working on it again since about 2006. And we still probably have about 20 years left to go. And that's part of, part of that development. So yeah, we'd be happy if there's connections there or anything like that. I think we'd be happy to do that. And again, I mentioned Danny Owen, who's on my team, is here. He leads that project in Arizona and he is also over land development here in Missouri.
Okay. So you guys don't have like a timeline? Because I feel like we get a lot of projects to come in and say, within one to five years, this phase, and then five to 10 will be phase two. So you don't really have a set. It's just kind of.
We actually have a very, we have a good idea of what it's going to be. The advantage we have is because we don't have debt on the land, that if there's a recession or things go sideways, we can hold. So I'm happy to share, hey, here's what we think it's going to be, because we actually do know, we haven't modeled out of what we think it's going to be. But if things change, we, we don't have to report to a bank or something like that. We can hold and we can make sure it's done right.
Okay, if all goes well, so I mean, like what would the projection be for the plan that you guys have laid out here?
Yeah, so phase one, and I guess Danny or Mike jump in here if I'm misstating it. Phase one, we actually think will be in the next five years. So we're really excited about that. I think phase two is probably four to nine. Am I ballparking that right, did you say? And phase three right now is a little unknown. Again, there's just certain infrastructure there that needs to go, but probably 10 to 15. I mean, I think we would like to be done with this north section in about 15 years is our goal. Again, some of it could speed up or slow down, but we think that's, that's the right ballpark.
Okay. So am I understanding it correctly too, that if somebody comes to you and wants to put a specific business that you guys don't necessarily, that aligns with you guys, like you shut them down?
Oh yeah, we won't sell to them. Yeah. And if they try and use it, so let's just use an example of like a strip club or, you know, I don't know, I'm trying to think of it. But like, that's a good example. Even if they bought the land, we can tell them no. Like, we can, we can prevent that type of use. So even if the city said, that's okay, and my guess is it's not okay in this area. But even if it was, we would say, no, you can't do that, right? And so there are, again, that would be in our CCNRs. And we would also say, hey, you need to develop within a certain period of time. And if you're not showing good faith, you know, progress on that, we have the right to buy it back. Because again, we don't, we also are not looking to sell land and have it sit there. We are looking to sell land because they're going to come to you and, you know, get the project going, get momentum, make sure it's of a high quality. That's what we're trying to accomplish. And so that's where, as a master planner, even though we are not, we're not going vertical, we are very involved in what that process is and how it moves forward.
Okay, so say somebody develops a strip mall, you have say, what individual stores go into that strip mall even though you don't technically own the strip mall?
We have, there are certain restrictions. There are certain things that we would say, you cannot put this.
Okay, so that's already established before?
Yeah, exactly. It wouldn't be like, oh, it's a Firehouse Subs or a Jimmy John's. It's like, that's up to them. But as long as it's, you know, if a restaurant is permitted and the exterior, the design is consistent with what we're looking for, then we let them choose that. It's, there's just certain, there's certain no use, you know, we're like, these are unpermitted uses.
Are we allowed access to what you guys don't allow?
Sure. We're happy to share that with you. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And my guess is, again, a lot of it's stuff you wouldn't allow anyways, right? So it's like, a lot of it's stuff that the city, the city's probably going to say, hey, we wouldn't do that anyways. But there are certain ones that we might be a little more careful about. I'm trying to even think off the top of my head. But sometimes even, even within like retail uses, it depends on what's going in. But if we know it might be a parking issue, right? So it's like, okay, we don't want something that's going to have, you know, tons of parking all at the same time and it congests the streets. And so we'll say, you get one of those, right? So even the city, I know you look at that as well, but we also are trying to look at that because we don't want like a main access into this 1,000 acres to be backed up and things like that. So, so that is something that we consider anytime, you know, one of our developers, somebody we're selling to, when they're developing things, we're trying to look at that mix. Because again, we do this all over America and we're trying to be sensitive to those things.
Okay. No, I like that. So I would say I'm, I'm in support of this. I would like to see that list and then also just to see what you guys have done in Surprise, just to put it to.
That's great. In fact, I almost wonder if maybe our next presentation, we can bring a summary for you. Would that be good of, hey, here's, here's kind of what happened, here's the timeline, here's what's there today. We can show some pictures. And again, if you'd like to actually connect with folks in the city, happy to do that as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rader.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I know we've hashed over this, but I want to make sure I'm crystal clear. And I guess, yeah, Mr. Bushak, on the incentive. We are, this is very high level. So we're not actually, are we approving this? Okay, we're not. We're not approving anything.
You're not taking any binding actions tonight.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And then I just had a question for, on the, I think, Michael, on the, you were talking about the schools, the Blue Springs and Lee Summit schools and your, and. So I think you said that this development would not have a lot of impact on Blue Springs School. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes. If you, if you look at the master plan, so here's, here's the Struthers Road interchange. So if, and then there is going to be, I'm not saying there's no residential in this area. In fact, if you look at phase three, you'll see there's, but if you look at R1 category, R2, there's not a ton of residential planned in what's mainly Blue Springs School. Where there is would be right here in this area of orange.
The R2?
Uh huh, yeah. So basically from here.
Okay, for over, okay, gotcha. And then up here in your gray area of your two and a half, R1, two and a half acres, 212 acres of R1?
Yes.
That's all Lee Summit?
This is all Lee Summit, uh huh.
Okay. Let me see. That's going to put quite a few homes in that area. So, and this is where you were talking about, they're working with the school, the Lee Summit school system. That was my biggest question, was how much it really would impact Blue Springs Schools? Because then they would, I mean, they have to be involved in-
Oh, sure, yes.
In what, in the ultimate decision on this. And really, everyone has done a great job of answering questions and asking questions. And so I'm very much in favor of moving forward on this. So thank you very much for all your work and your presentation this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. Just piggybacking a little bit off of Councilmember Hodges' questions about timing. I was just curious, how quickly does the infrastructure go in, the major infrastructure? Were you talking about the Todd George, the water lines, the sewer? Or is, I guess the idea is that the one sewer lift station to serve the first phase would go in, but the other ones would be later? I was just curious how that works, and then-
That's exactly right, yeah. We'd get that going as soon as possible. So, yeah, I mean, that would be the goal, is that first sewer lift station and the Todd George Road, water and the road would be the first things.
So that would all come in within the next couple of years?
Make sure I'm not staying there.
I'm just curious, like, what the timing is?
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
Right, Neil, I'm Assistant City Manager, I'll add a little bit on that. And I might look back at Jeff Thorne and Michael Park over there to back me up a little bit. But with the lift stations in particular, we've done preliminary engineering and preliminary analysis, and so we're very comfortable with that. But that's a situation where we're not going to invest the dollars and put the lift stations in until we're guaranteed that we're going to have users for that. So it's a bit of a chicken and egg. And what I mean by that is that we know that construction of that will take some time, but construction of whatever the private use is going to take some time as well. So we'll be doing those things simultaneously. We don't want to have a $10.5 million lift station that doesn't have any flow in it. It's not good for the systems and the pumps and everything in there. So with-
The schedule of Todd George Parkway, as Mr. Elam said, was funded by the April 2023 no-tax increase bond issue. We would anticipate the need for Todd George, it's really a Colburn to Woods Chapel. It's a full construction for Phase One of this. On our timeline, if we were to wait and city completes the project as we committed, I'd say we're probably about three to five years away from doing that work. Although, you know, if we find that partnership with land reserve, maybe we could accelerate that schedule. But I would still anticipate, you've got probably a year of design, maybe a year and a half of construction. So you're anywhere from two to three years of actual work to complete the road improvements to support the development of this area. So it's just determining when we actually kick that off. Our timeline or accelerated in partnership, still yet to be determined.
But the road, water, and sewer lines, those you, but it sounds, it sounds like you try to get all that installed quickly, and then the lift station simultaneous with construction. But like, you're not going to wait 10 years to finish Todd George, the idea is to do that?
No, no, we just had prioritized it based on our resource capacity to deliver all of those. We had $200 million worth of bond projects approved, you know, just two years ago. And so we began to prioritize as staff and council when we could deliver those projects, given our resource availability, and Todd George Parkway, given its comparative demand to other public improvements, it was deferred a little further out in our capital improvement program.
Okay. It all makes sense. I really was just more curious than anything how that all gets faced. And then as far as the financing goes, I guess this would be similar to any other project that has some kind of tax abatement financing, that you would figure out how to-
Yes, yes.
Pay for all that, and then how that factors in over years of your development?
Yeah, and one thing Mr. Elam said I want to expand on, and it is a chicken or an egg. And one thing I didn't say earlier is, I mean, there's people that want to buy pieces of this property. We have offers on pieces of this property. They all, part of those offers say you have to deliver several things, water, sewer, and major infrastructure, road improvements around us. So the timing of this is a little fluid right now, but we think we're helped on the end buyer side, and developer side, and end users. You know, there's actual users that are interested in pieces of this, they're there. I can tell you they're there. So we can help on that to make the timing of all this come together.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Prior?
Thank you, Mayor. So I don't have any questions, I just wanted to say that I am in support of this. And I wish, I like your approach to development, and I wish more developers had the strict rules you guys have. I guess I do have one question, actually. So the Blue Springs School District portion, I think I already know the answer. But, so that's divided, like, that property ta, the property tax will go to Blue Springs School District and not Lee Summit School District on that line? But then part of it will go to the city of Lee Summit, since it's in Lee Summit, correct?
Correct, yeah.
What is the percentage, do you know?
Hey, Mr. Bushak, take that.
Blue Springs, I don't know specifically, so I'll kind of generalize. But typically, the school district is 67 to 70% of the property tax bill. Lee Summit has historically been 16 and a half to 17%, and then the other districts are the remainder. So around 70 for school district, around 17 for the city.
All right, thank you. So I guess if you guys have a really great store that's going to generate a lot of revenue, put it on the Lee Summit side. But yeah, no, I'm in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rader?
Thank you, Mayor. Really quick, the South Side. So I know we're doing this first, and then are we doing anything with South Side now? Once we get this, we'll start on South Side?
Yes.
Okay.
And the timing will, it's, I think, I'll let them speak to this, but the timing is similar. I think they're ready to proceed with the South area also. We wanted to limit this discussion, the North area, because it is, I'm not sure if this is accurate, but more ready, and we focused on this, and we have the sewer pump stations, we have the large arterial. This seemed like the ideal setting to present this concept. It'll be somewhat simpler maybe in the South area, because that's more single-family. So there'll be more property that's just paying taxes like normal. And so we'll use the same structure based on your feedback tonight, but it'll, it'll look different than the North area. The North area has unique needs.
That's great. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, I'll ask a few questions. I think I want to go back to Mr. Van Buskerk for a second. Just to, we keep talking about, Mr. Bushak's trying to explain how one developer is an advantage, so. And you then, just a minute ago, said that you've got users that are, you know, would like to buy, but you've got to deliver on infrastructure. So what's the smallest type of parcel you'd be selling? I'd say, I know that there's different uses here, like you've got industrial versus commercial, so just, you can pick one.
Yeah, Mayor, there's some natural breaks that seem, you know, like, for example, here at the interchange, north of the power line to Struther, you know, that seems like one development parcel. Everything up here to the north of that, you know, I could see going to one user. The industrial side's been very interesting. We've been outside of Kansas City, meeting with industrial developers who are looking at this project as the reason they would come to Kansas City. But then all the other players who are very active here have been out, you know, many of them have walked the site. So, you know, where that ends up, where we end up doing a deal with one developer, or we end up parceling that out, that's still to be determined. There's projects that are coming through all the time, through KCADC and the Missouri Partnership, and we've put some of those projects in front, and we've submitted this site, with the caveat that we've got to get the infrastructure here. So it could end up going different ways. The residential ground, I think this is some of the most beautiful residential development ground in the north side of Lee Summit, which there isn't a lot left, as we know. And being adjacent to that park, there's a lot of developers interested in parts of that. So it, I say probably, if I was just generalizing, you know, this is a 60-acre parcel, just to put that in scale. So I could see, you know, chunks of that is how this will probably advance.
Okay, so we keep talking about the advantage of one developer. So let's just say typically, if this wasn't in front of, this presentation wasn't before us, and you were selling this land, and a gas station came and said, "I want to be there at Struther." I just want to, I do know the answers to these because I am in the business, but I just want to ask the question, so you can explain it.
Sure.
So the gas station wants to come in, comedian store, so they want to buy a parcel, and you're willing to sell it to them, and then they come to the city, and what happens?
And then the city says, "Well, you don't have water, you don't have sewer, and you need to improve all the roads around you."
Right, so they have to put millions in.
Right, so that ends the conversation right there.
Okay, so by having, when we talk about one developer, we're talking about someone that's going to comprehensively. We've got the master developer, which is LR. But then you're going to have developers that come in and buy portions and then develop, subdevelop it. And when we do that, this is kind of hard to explain, this is what Mr. Bushak's talking about. So a lot of times, the gas station, you know, you develop an area, like you're talking about, let's say it's a subdeveloper, and they come in and they, and the gas station had to spend an extra million dollars on infrastructure. And then, you know, you start developing it out, and then you're left with a few parcels, and then the infrastructure's in, so there could be a winner there, or there could be a loser. But it's not necessarily fair.
Correct.
Because sometimes, the last one in, the city's like, "Nope, you're overcapacity now, and now you're going to spend a bunch of, you know, more money." And you're already, because it's developed, the price is a lot higher usually at that point. So I guess what I'm saying is, how can you, you better explain this so that you can explain how this stabilizes prices and stabilizes the fairness so that you're going to equally distribute this cost amongst all of, number one, the subdevelopers, but then also it's kind of an equal sharing of costs with the actual users.
Right. You hit on one point, you know, the last one in the door usually gets stuck with a lot, and we see that. I've seen that in projects around the metro area, and I can give you examples here in Lee Summit, where, you know, sewer capacity was maxed out, but you're here, so you got to deal with it. So we're trying to address that all upfront. This one, this property, this 1,000 acres, is very, very challenging because of the lift, the amount that has to be put in just to open it up. It's not like we're talking about a short sewer extension and a curb cut and a turn lane. We got to build major sewer pumping stations, extend major water lines. So we have to take that off the table. There's not many developers, really, at all, that would come in and take this on. We have a very unique situation here. We have one landowner who's owned this property for a long time, has no debt on the property, as Tyler mentioned earlier, and is very patient. So they're willing to do what needs to be done to open this up. And once that happens, then there will be subdevelopers, so they might buy, you know, this piece, and then they will be going in and putting in the pad sites, which the C store wants. The C store wants an approved pad site. And they mean, that means they want water and sewer brought to their, to their one-acre parcel, two-acre parcel, whatever that is. So this just takes all the uncertainty out of it. That's what we're trying to get to. Uncertainty kills deals, and that's what we're trying to address.
So we're trying to create certainty.
Correct.
Okay, that's good. That's kind of one thing I was trying to be able to articulate. But, so we're trying to create certainty for everyone that's involved. Then you don't end up with some pieces of land, and it's like, why isn't that being developed? Why did that one? So let's say we go through a recession, like we did, you know, 20 years ago, or almost 20 years ago. So that happened, and a lot of developments did stop. However, some developers just started either getting foreclosed on or selling for dirt cheap to all kinds of people, and then everything went different directions. And then all of a sudden, we were piecemealing everything, and then that didn't develop in a contiguous, in a contiguous or a really nice way, the way we really want things to. So we are in a situation here where the landowner can survive a recession.
It's a very unique situation with this.
Yes. And we don't want to, we want to try to do this comprehensively and develop it so that, so that develops in a great way and doesn't get parceled out and piecemealed. So the questions then turn to, are the, is this plan enticing enough to bring the applicants? And you're saying that it is?
It is. You know, there's been a lot of discussion about industrial. And, you know, with what we've done on the other industrial developments here in Lee Summit, we've made ourselves competitive, and that's what you got to do. And when I mean competitive, I'm competitive the end user. That's the piece I'm talking about. So that's important. And the other things, as we've proposed this structure here, I mean, it's, yes, it's marketable, and it's something that's achievable that we can get this done.
Okay. So with regard to the risk we talked about at the very beginning, you know, Mr. Buswell, you'd be the one that probably have to answer this one. Like, you're in this for the long haul, and you've obviously proven this all over the country.
We've owned this land for 40 years, by the way, or ish, I don't know, around that.
So you're saying that you're not wanting to move on from this product without master planning it?
Absolutely, I mean-
Because that's really the risk here, is this plan looks really great, but we're really counting on you to follow this plan and not start piecemealing it like I was just talking about with Mr. Van Buskerk.
Absolutely, and we agree completely. And we think having time and size is actually a competitive advantage in being able to put in trails and parks and schools and, you know, all the things that you need. If you're piecemealing it, you know, if it's somebody has 20 or 30 acres, and you say, "Well, we really need a school." And so you're like, "Well, you need 10 acres for a school, so now is the rest of it actually developable?" Well, we're trying from the outset to say, "Well, you know, where do we need parks? And where do we need trails? And how do they connect?" And, you know, it doesn't mean that some changes might not happen down the line, but these concepts are things that are important to us. And when we engage planners, and we engaged a local planner, Olson, to help us with this project, we told them, "Here are our priorities, and here are the things that we need to make sure we build in." It wasn't, "Hey, I need as many units as I possibly can, and I need to make sure, you know, every single dollar I'm able to squeeze out of it." That's not what we're doing here, right? Again, if we build a great community, there will be value, and we're still able to get good rates of return as a result.
Okay, thank you. So the, that kind of talks to, we got certainty, and then we're trying to provide certainty. And then we're talking about stability, and we've already got built-in stability with the land user, the owner, I mean, with the partner that we have. And they are working great with our cities, our schools and parks. I see some really nice locations for parks here. So I guess, Mr. Bushak, this plan, what if it's not working for developer, I mean owner, the owner, which is the master developer? What if it's not working for Mr. Van Buskerk with regard to threading the needle? Because you've got to, you've got to find someone that's willing to say, "Yes, I'll commit to that 130 acres, but you got to provide the sanitary sewer, and we got to go build this, we got to get, build that simultaneously almost," you know. Is that going to work? And if it doesn't work, what's the, what's the, what's the plan?
So I think the answer to the question, "Will it work," or "What's the probability it'll work", is relatively high, given all the factors we've talked about. Because the point at which land reserve puts their money on the table, so to speak, when they come forward with a financing plan, when they're, for example, when they're ready to move forward with Phase One, as Mayor Portem Lopez was focusing on phasing, there will be a financing for the major infrastructure costs associated with that phase. And at that point, they're locked in. They've put their, you know, so to speak, put their money on the table, the financing's happened. We're funding these public improvements, the funding, not we, the city's put in the money it's put in. But the funding, the public improvements are now being funded. And that creates maximum motivation for land reserve to sell according to their comprehensive plan. And if we build in control mechanisms in this structure, so they do exactly what you were just talking about, which is essentially stick to the comprehensive plan that they're advancing, then this program should work. And then you have to deal with the variables, which is if there's some sort of, you know, economic situation that's national or global, and what if there's an economic downturn, things slow down. But at the point at which they are doing a financing for Phase- at the point at which they are doing a financing for Phase One, Phase Two, and there's major infrastructure being put in, that's when they need to get their return for the financing that they've advanced, and they need the money from the land sales, and it will naturally develop. I think that sequence is, it's probably the ideal situation to be in, but we can't control all of the unknown variables. I think that's the best answer. And I would also say that your first line of questioning with Mr. Van Buskirk was an answer to Councilmember Hodges' question regarding benefits and risks, and I think you did a better job of me than highlighting this, what you, what you ended up with as the certainty aspect of this, which is what I was trying to say when I'm explaining we're dealing with one landowner. We have a, a extremely rare situation to deal with somebody who is willing to put this sort of effort into this development and working with us, as opposed to just selling the land and hoping for the best.
Well, I, I have had a little bit of an advantage by, I mean, we've been, I've been working with PRI first for a long time now, and we've been having these discussions, and I know some of the conversations we've had, I'm like, I was, was more worried. I didn't like the solutions that we were, you know, early on talking about. I was, I was like, that's just not going to develop.
Right, and we have talked about some of my ideas that have been abandoned, so...
[laughing]
I would, I would agree with you on that point.
No, this is genius, and you came up with this right here, I'm sure, with Mr. Peterson and others.
There was a concept or two that I advanced that our staff talked me out of, but I, I think this is...
I'm glad they did, because I'm going to Mr. Elam next, and then I'll wrap it up. Um, so, Mr. Elam, so, the reason I was worried about some of the things early on was because, um, a developer, subdeveloper, it's really hard, master developer, subdeveloper, subdeveloper comes in, or maybe a user, uh, end user, builder, um, they come into the city and they want to do a, a pre-app meeting, and I've just, I've seen it before. It's like, uh, nope, can't do that, can't do that, there's no sewer, nope, you can't do that, nope, you can't do that, because there's no, you'd have to build another turn lane, you'd have to improve the interchange that's, you know, around the corner. I mean, is this going to help with all of that?
Abs, absolutely. Um, a, a good example is, uh, just looking at the, the major infrastructure with the size of this property in general. It affords us the opportunity to spread those costs out across the larger area. Um, one single project on a lot of these wouldn't be able to support the infrastructure necessary for this, but having a stable landowner, uh, having the, the plan in place allows those things to occur, uh, and, and that certainty and stability, like you put it, to be there.
Okay, um, that's good. Um, I do think it's, um, really, uh, a good plan. It mirrors what we've done for, like you said, Mr. Buscheck, 30 years. Um, I think it's, it's too bad we couldn't have done this 30 years ago for the other parts of the community. Um, but, well, you, you weren't here 30 years ago.
No.
Okay, okay. Um, so, no, that was not a criticism of you, my goodness. You, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be having this conversation without David Buscheck right now. So, appreciate all the work that you've done. So, I really liked the, just the overall comprehensive approach, and the certainty and the stability it provides. Um, I think that it enables Mr. Van Buskirk to put deals together, and, um, and for us to get infrastructure in place, and I think it really reminds me of, give Councilmember Level a hard time, he's always talking about, how can we make it more beautiful? I think this is how you make things more beautiful, is you plan it out way ahead like this. Um, I mean, part of the money was supposed to go to regional, something, and then the regional infrastructure, and then the other part was supposed to go to public improvements, right? So, that's how we can really take advantage of this, I think, in the long run. So, very good, appreciate, hard work, and, um, the, the partnering that you're doing with all of us, cities, schools, um, parks, and, and more, so, and with our staff. So, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Rader.
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, thank you.
You bet, thank you. Councilmember Shields.
Okay, I'll be super quick. I just wanted to say, um, one of the additional benefits that I really see to this is just the economy of scale of doing it all at once, that you don't have to have every parcel figuring out their own storm drainage. You don't have to have every parcel figuring out how to extend Todd George a little bit further, how to improve it a little bit further. Doing it all at once, having it planned, is just a lot more economical than trying to do it individually. It's, it's more feasible, like, there's no way to do this without this plan, but it'll be a better return for everybody and execute better. So, I'm very happy with it, and that's all I had to add. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Buscheck, do you want to make any other comments? Mr. Buswell, you're welcome to make any comments, or your team.
I would say this is, this is the feedback that we were hoping for. I really appreciate the council giving us the feedback on the primary item that we need, and the other, all the other feedback, all the other points. We'll definitely take all that into account as we move forward.
Good. All right, thank you. Mr. Buswell.
Yeah, I, I would just say thank you again. Appreciate the feedback, and if there's anything else that we could or should be doing, we're open to suggestions, right? And so, we, we want to work with you. Any community we're in, again, we invested in this community 40 years ago, so it's not like yesterday. This is, this has been a long-term goal, a long-term vision. Uh, you know, in recent years, the time became right, and, um, we're excited to, to finally execute on something that happened well before, for my time in this position. So, thank you so much.
I will tell you one thing. I will tell you one thing. We've been lobbying really hard, really hard on this corridor 470 for you and for us, um, because we need 470 widened, um, and we need the interchanges around it, um, you know, improved. And it's, the dollars are, are, you know, three, twice what that total was, two or three times.
Sure.
So, it's going to have to come from the federal level, um, and maybe through the state and the federal, but we'll keep working on them, but we just, I don't know, you might have to go with this one of these days to Jeff City, or Washington DC, or, I'm serious.
If there's things that we needed to help, we're...
It's that big of an issue.
Okay, well, we're happy to help if there's, if there's things you need from us.
Yeah, I mean, you've got 10% of the land in Lee Summit.
Right.
This isn't 10%, right in front of us, but all of your land is...
All of it, correct.
So, you're a major stakeholder, and we appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, um, would you all like to continue?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Let's, um, let's finish our meeting, and then, uh, thank you all for being here, and all coming, uh, in town for this. Uh, we're going to go ahead and knock out a few of these items. Proposed ordinances forwarded from committee, Councilmember Rader, would you please read Bill number 25 dash 149?
Thank you, Mayor, yes. I move to second reading Bill number 25 dash 149, ordinance awarding the bid for solicitation number 2025 dash 064, the, for the abatement and demolition of the MSHP Troop A campus at 504 Southeast Blue Parkway to an Abatement Services, Inc. in the amount of $779,844, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading Bill number 25 dash 149, by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please score the vote. Passes 8-0, or it is, uh, that is, oh, no, it's not, it goes to second reading, so Councilmember Rader, would you please read it for adoption?
Um, yes, I re, I move for adoption Bill number 25 dash 149, and ordinance awarding the bid for solicitation number 2025 dash 064, for the abatement and demolition of the MSHP Troop A campus at 504 Southeast Blue Parkway to Abatement Services, Inc. in the amount of $779,844, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 25 dash 149, by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please score the vote. Now that bill's adopted. Okay, we're going to go to proposed ordinances, second reading. Councilmember Shields, would you please read Bill number 25 dash 145?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for adoption of Bill number 25 dash 145, an ordinance determining declaring the necessity for acquiring for public use certain public, certain permanent easements and temporary construction easements for the proposed Douglas Complete Street Improvements Project, authorizing the city manager and his designees to negotiate for the purpose of acquiring necessary interest in land, and authorizing the city manager and his designees to institute condemnation proceedings of such interest in land cannot be acquired by purchase through good faith negotiations.
Thank you. A motion to adopt Bill number 25 dash 145, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please score the vote. Passes seven to one, it's adopted, and that takes us to committee reports. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you. So, I'm just going to read the summary that Mr. Park gave me. Um, we had a Public Works Committee meeting last night. Um, we recommended another contract for sidewalk gap program improvements, a lease agreement on airport property, another airport grant, a new on-call airport consultant, and a contract for the demolition of the old Troop A building, which we voted on tonight. We also continued discussions about funding a stormwater utility. We're almost, we're almost done working on this priority goal, and should finalize our recommendations to the city council in September, including a level service expectation, a level of service expectations, and a fourth cent stormwater sales tax approach for the potential April election. Um, and thankfully, Mr. Snook said that we could do it under the Parks and Stormwater Utility, the fourth cent and fourth cent. So, that makes it a little bit easier on the city if we go that route. Um, and then, we also started our work on the solid waste priority goal, and there's one, oh, this is important. So, there's one more informational meeting, and that is tomorrow night from six to eight at the police station. And public comments and interest in the Solid Waste Task Force can also be submitted online through the remainder of the week. We will then be getting into RFP details in the, at the next Public Works Committee meeting. But can you, Mr. Park, state the website that they can submit it also online? Because I don't remember, I mean, I remember the website, but I don't remember exactly how to get there.
I'd be happy to. And I think if people just go to the city's website, so citiofls.net, in the first search bar you see at the top right corner, just type in trash, and it's one of the top three webpages that come up, and it's the citywide contracted residential trash service. Um, and it's a whole webpage. On that, on that webpage, it's got our previous discussions that are linked, it's got, uh, more information, we'll be posting additional FAQs there, but it, also, there's the links to, um, resident public comments, as well as interest forms if they've got interest in serving on this task force.
So, that's good to know, because you don't have to attend the meeting to, there's still an outside opportunity to be able to be on that. So, and that's all. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Lee Summit Economic Development Council had their annual meeting, and we had several, um, council members and the mayor in attendance, um, including myself, and it was a great program. Um, heard from the statewide Director of Economic Development, and got to recognize Mr. Van Buskirk, who I believe has already left, so we don't get to recognize him again as, as Citizen of the Year. Um, and then, we will have Finance and Budget Committee on August 18th at 4:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, council comments. Okay, no council comments. Staff roundtable.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few items. Just a reminder, the Charter Review Commission Applications Interest Forms, uh, the deadline for that will be this Friday at 5:00 PM. That's when the cutoff for applications will be received for that process. Um, want to acknowledge a ton of work, yeah, that went into that hour and a half presentation, um, by Mr. Buscheck, Mr. Elam, department heads on master planning, as you heard, a whole nother community. So, a lot of work on, just to get to that point, so, but a lot, lot more work ahead, too. Um, a couple things. If we can have Chief Forbes come forward and make, uh, I'll say, a final formal announcement on some recognition that our police department, uh, has achieved, and then, following that up, I'll have, uh, Assistant City Manager Elam come forward and introduce one of our new staff members.
Thank you. Mayor, Members of Council, Travis Forbes, Chief of Police. Over the weekend, I went to Little Rock, Arkansas, for the Commission for the Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies Conference. Uh, that is where the Lee Summit Police Department, amongst several other agencies, uh, presented our bid for accreditation, and it was voted on by the commission. I had to answer a lot of questions. Uh, Ms. Tanisha Artist is our, uh, accreditation manager. She is outstanding at what she does. Uh, they were very informed. They asked about Green Street. They, they asked about that opening this weekend, so they, they knew our community. They had kind of done their homework, and asked me some, uh, easy questions and some tough questions, but the result was, we were accredited with excellence, which means that we had zero conditions on our accreditation. Uh, they had lots of good things to say about our community and our, our police department. So, it was a great honor to attend that conference and come back with accreditation that will carry us for the next four years. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, breaking another rule. Again, I never want to follow Chief Forbes speaking, ever. Um, but, uh, I am very excited to introduce a new staff member here. He's not new to the city, uh, but new to the administration department, and new to this side of the house, is what I'll call it. Uh, so, we have Mr. Sean Dorance, who is our Facilities and Events Manager, uh, who is essentially the Green Street Manager. Uh, so, he's a gentleman that is going to be responsible for the day-to-day operations associated with that. Uh, and I want to give him an opportunity, uh, just to introduce himself really quick to, to council, and let you all know, uh, this is one of the most popular people in town right now.
Mayor, Council, it's good to, good to see you guys, good to be here and talk. Um, yeah, I've, I've been with the city for a few years now, uh, working over with Parks and Recreation. Obviously, Joe Snook is a fantastic organization that he's built over there. Now, I'm happy to, to be over here and to kind of continue, you know, building great stuff here in the city of Lee Summit. You guys have built an absolutely fantastic facility over here. There's going to be so much to do with it, so much opportunity, and I'm really looking forward to, to what we'll be able to do over the next few years here.
It's exciting. Yeah, we welcome you, and we're looking forward to Friday. Six o'clock is the ribbon cutting. And, um, where are you going to be stationed?
Everywhere.
Yeah. All right, just make sure I don't mess up the, the ribbon cutting part.
You probably got it down better than I do at this point, so...
All right.
We'll get it.
Very good. All right, well, thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Yep. Is that your, going to be your permanent spot up there?
What's that?
Where's this permanent spot going to be?
His workplace, office space?
Yeah.
We're, uh, well, that's part of the no-tax increase bond issue, right, is to reimagine City Hall. So, as we get this project done over here...
Yeah.
We'll be staying at work, thinking about how, how does City Hall lay out, because we let, we've lived here for...
I mean, right now, he's right in the, he's wide open. I mean, everybody has access to him.
Yep.
So, okay.
He gets interrupted quite a bit.
I, I was in an office where, uh, an older gentleman named Tom Lovell kept coming and bugging me at work every day, so, I mean, just being anywhere where I can be is, is fantastic.
Awesome. All right, well...
Thank you again.
I know where you're at, and you don't have a door to close right now, so, I've, I've got access to you, and it's, so, all right, well, we'll see you Friday. Well, we'll see you soon, and that. Thank you, Mr. Dunning. Six o'clock, Friday, unless you want to come to State City, and that's 4:30. All right, I need somebody to read us in the closed session. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. Pursuant to Section 61021-9 of the Vice Statutes of the State of Missouri pertaining to preparation, including any discussion or work product on behalf of a public governmental body or its representatives for negotiations with employee groups, I move to enter closed session.
Second.
Thank you. Have a motion to move into closed session by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Shields?
Aye.
Councilmember Hodges?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Councilmember Rader?
Aye.
Councilmember Funk?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryor?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Baird?
Aye. Everyone have a good night. Everyone have a good night.